There are definitely some places to stay away from.
I have some of the folks whenever you're ready.
Okay, all ready?
Okay, good evening, everyone. We will call the 571st meeting of the Planning Board of the Village of DePue to order. Could we have a roll call, please?
Member Soha.
Here.
Member Federowicz.
Here.
Member Matusik.
Here.
Member Spencer.
Present.
And Chairman Machiaski.
Here. Could everybody please rise for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Notification of emergency exits.
The emergency exits are located to my left and to the rear of the room. In the event of an alarm or emergency, please move in an orderly fashion to the exits and evacuate the building.
Thank you. We have one item on the agenda tonight. It's for the property located at 5150 Broadway. Could we have the legal notice, please?
Please take notice that the Village of DePue Planning Board will hold a meeting on Thursday, August 7, 2025 at 7:00 PM. Pre-board meeting begins at 6:30 PM in the conference room in the council chambers of the municipal building, 85 Manitow Street, DePue, New York, to consider the application for submission by Dean Architects on behalf of Hot Spot 716 Incorporated for the property located at 5150 Broadway, Unit 2, DePue, New York. The following matters to be reviewed. They are requesting the following: special use permit to open and operate a retail smoke shop. The current zoning is C2 Shopping Center District.
Thank you. Who's here representing the project? If you could come forward to the podium. For the record, state your name and your relationship to the project, please.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Frank DeGlossy. I'm here on behalf of the petitioner, Hot Spot 716, Inc.
Okay, and what are you proposing, sir?
We're proposing there's an application pending before the board for a special use permit to operate at that location of 5150, a smoke and vape shop.
Frank, can you spell your last name first, please?
Sure. D.I., capital B, L.A.S.I.
Is there anything else you want to inform this board of before we start asking some questions?
Sure, and I actually have, Mr. Isa.
And again, sir, for the record, if you state your name and your relationship to the project, please.
Isa Musa, the owner of Hot Spot Smoke Shop.
Do you want to enlighten this board on anything else of what you're proposing?
Well, we said in on your session prior to this, we plan on moving forward with it. My client purchased the property earlier this year, I'm sorry, the business earlier this year, and then found out he had to apply for his special use permit. I don't think he, they weren't represented by attorneys when they put this agreement together. I just got recently involved with his file. So they weren't quite sure. I believe that the inspector came out and for the most part, I believe my clients have complied with what they needed to do. They're not operating anymore. They were informed not to. I'm not sure who the enforcement officer was. Was it this gentleman?
Yes.
And your name is?
Don Beilefeld.
So, so the inspector was out there, and correct me if I'm wrong, have they been compliant for the most part?
Well, not at first, no.
Okay.
They didn't start applying until months after they shut them down.
And I think there was some confusion with the fact that they did not realize they needed the special use permit. It was never represented to them.
Well, no, that's not true. When I first approached them about opening without a business occupancy or without filing for the sign permits, explained to them exactly what they needed to do. And they said, well, we would like to stay open until we file this. I said, well, that'd be fine. You can't use the Oasis Smoke Shop name, and you'd have to remove 80% of the goods in there, and you can sell t-shirts, candy, whatever else you want, retail-wise, and we'll let you go as long as you file the business occupancy. Well, another month after that, they still hadn't filed the business occupancy or the special use permit.
And they did not, and they didn't do what was agreed upon. He didn't mean Oasis. He meant Hot, he meant Hot Spot Smoke Shop.
All right, all right.
I apologize. There's multiple smoke shops in the village. But it took several months for them just to apply for the business occupancy. In the meantime, they were still selling out of there. Told me the special use permit, took them another month beyond that to apply for that, and had to send the police there several times to shut them down.
Okay, so can we just back up a little bit? Is there any connection to the former vape shop at Terrace and Transit? None at all?
Well, again, we have the paperwork here. Same names and same phone numbers are on the, or the smoke shop that was on Terrace Boulevard. That is the same handwriting, phone numbers, and
Same as, and as well as
Same vehicles.
The police reports.
Nothing's changed, just different locations.
Do you have that to put in the record?
Yes, we do.
What do we have that shows it's the same?
We have both applications.
Okay, so can we see the other application just to, because it's a different world, it's a different entity altogether. But if it's just a reincorporation of the same entity, it's a little different.
Okay, as code enforcement's looking for that, after the code enforcement issued a cease and desist, was the business continuing to operate?
Nope.
We have police reports indicating it was.
Yes, there are police reports that said the business was open. You said the business has not operated at all right up to this time tonight?
No, not as of right now. It's been closed for
This afternoon about 1:15, it was closed?
No, it's been closed before.
At 1:15 this afternoon, it was closed? Sure looked like it was open when I was there.
No, not the one on Broadway.
Yeah, lights were on. It was an open sign.
Everybody's operating.
Yeah. So we have new birth dates from the police department, police reports that the code enforcement department has that verified you were open. You're saying you were never open.
Can I answer those reports, sir?
No, they're over here.
They're putting them together right now.
I believe they got everything.
Same as the old owner. Here, Don. It goes in the old pile.
This is Okay, it's Ali Musa. This one here is Isa Musa. That's Ali Iba Musa. Just use different first names.
Can I ask a question, please?
Okay.
And then it's
Right, however, what I believe is that there's a connection because all of the police reports that come from 5150 have the old owner's name from
And all the phone numbers are the same.
DMV, I was cat. All right, so just ask him who Abdul Satar Musa is and if he or she is part of the business. And also, let's let them see all this stuff we're looking at.
Yeah, yes.
Mr. DeGlossy, here you go.
Thanks, Mr. DeGlossy.
Several police reports, the other application. You may have heard me, there's, I'm going to say the name wrong, but Ali Musa is on all the prior paperwork, and now we have Isa Musa here, and the concern is it's just sort of a reincorporation. So if you guys don't mind, I'll just ask, who is Ali Musa?
That was the employee that was there.
Ali was the employee where?
Hot Spot.
Both locations?
He was at the other one, but I bought the other
He's an employee, but he's going to be the owner now?
No, I'm the owner.
He's the owner of the new one. Ali's on the paperwork for the old one.
He was working over there.
But he was just an employee, but he was the owner?
No, he's just a player. He's not the owner.
Why are the same phone numbers showing up on both applications?
That's, it's my name.
This is my phone number, because I helped them with both applications.
Can we have your name and address for the record?
Mine?
Yeah, just your name and address, just so she can take it down.
My name is Dean Alharbi.
Can you spell that, please?
D.E.A.N. Alharbi, A.L.H.A.R.B.I.
Sir, what is your relationship to this project?
Friends, you know, I helped them, I fill up this for both of them, the before and this one. And this is my phone number, 730-9964. My address, 62 Double Lane, Chicago, New York, 14225.
So you're just a friend of theirs. When I call that number, you try, you, I'm calling you when I'm trying to reach the owner?
Somebody, firstly, remember when I think me and my cousin from Oasis, and him was in the same line, we talked to you last time, about when he buy the business, it wasn't no smoke, even the business owner, he didn't have no tobacco inside, he didn't have no, nothing, for no vape, he gets half glass, right? You remember that? And we told him, he said, if he took all the, he guess leave 20% of the glass inside the store, he can open. But this, this is that, I think this is the confusion, because the store is open, because you told us last time, said if you keep 20% of the glass, he can back open.
Yeah, you can keep it open as a retail store if you minimize the 20% glass and do the business occupancy. In the meantime, you can file the special use permit, but they never filed the business occupancy. This went on for a month and a half.
They're trying to get in touch with the owner for the building, for the building, so he can have the survey and some other stuff. This is what they're doing. But with the open, the store is open, even the staff, he thought it's 20% inside the store.
Well, when I went in there, nothing had changed. It was all still the same glass.
You can see the glass more than 20%.
It was, it was a lot.
Less than here.
Way more than 20%.
And the lease was signed in early March. The lease was signed in early March?
Yeah. First of all, they don't know, you know, exists a business, they thought it was, you know, like you buy any other business. When you buy business from somebody, you apply for the license, and you go, nothing, no problem. You have to close it and then back.
Yeah, but there was no business there. The business was in a different location. You moved to a whole nother building.
No, we're not talking about the different location. This is totally different business, different owner. He gets by the sign from Hot Spot.
Correct, but you said that was your cousin?
Oh, no, they're friends. They're not my cousin.
If I may, just, I'm looking at, you're discussing an individual that owned a business at 5460 Transit Road, and it's, his name is Abdul Satar M.O.U.S.A. And Mr. Musa here, Isa's last name is spelled M.U.S.S.A.
If you notice, there are, the phone numbers are the same on both
I told you, this is my phone, because I have, we have the bookkeeper, so we help, we help them, you know?
Can I ask a simple question here?
Sure.
This application is being applied by Hot Spot 716, Inc.
Yeah.
What are the principles of Hot Spot 716, Inc.?
What is it? Him. He's the owner.
You're a sole person on that incorporation?
Yes.
And you're, that's the same name that was on the application for Transit Road?
No, no.
Those two applications, you have the one for Transit and the one for Broadway, have the same Hot Spot 716, Inc. Correct?
To be honest, you know, he gets by that, that name, he thought it was, you know, was popular, you know, he can get customer quicker in there. This is, you know what I mean? Nothing else. If that name is not, you don't like the name, we can take the name out, and we can change different name.
But you're using a corporation as a
No, it's not, it's not the same corporation.
Well, it says Inc. I can see that's what that means.
Totally different corporations. You can see when we, when we apply for the new application, you know, the new corporation.
Who was the owner of the original Hot Spots? What was the name of the corporation for that?
Satar Musa. I don't, I don't remember. You should have on the paper.
Do you have a copy of the purchase and sale agreement for the other business?
For this? Yes, we do.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, I guess going back, you know, there may be some discrepancies on these applications, but again, going back to the cease and desist that was issued by the Village of DePue Building Department and our police department seeing the business open without a special use permit and without a C of O, how can you explain that to us?
We've been closed, I think, like
I'd like to hear from the person who's the principal there. Your friend. We need to speak with the person who's responsible.
Over a month.
Okay, well, let's back up to June the 3rd, June the 20th, or June the 17th and June the 28th. You were apparently open.
Sometimes we just be in there cleaning up the pack. We had a lot of cleaning to do. That's all it is.
When I was in there, the place was cleaned. It was open for business. The doors were open, the lights were on, the open sign was on, and people were seen coming and going according to the police.
When was that?
On each of those occasions that they were there.
So just a month ago, month and a half ago?
Yeah, June. Those dates that are on the police reports. We asked them to stake them out for us to make sure that they
June the 3rd, 17th, and 28th.
So you submitted the stop work on April 23rd, right?
I believe so, yes.
Right?
April 28th, I think, for the cease and desist, yes.
So basically, all of them either operated, right? And then in June, that's when we sent law enforcement into kind of
Yeah, I stopped several times myself and said, why are you open? So we're just in here cleaning. You could clearly see that
So there were 60 days of some type of operation after, yeah, okay.
And Ron, just to clarify, you said today, 1:15, open light was on, lights were on?
Yes, I did not physically go into the store, but yes.
I do think, looking at the purchase and sale agreement and just pulling up, this board can take notice of the fact that this new business, Hot Spot 716, Inc., was incorporated in March of 2025. The names are different. I don't think it's appropriate to assign the misdeeds of the prior business to this person.
Well, it's fine.
And I think they've made a compelling case about that. However, that doesn't move us past what seemed to be credible direct witness testimony of this business operating when it should not have been.
Repeated.
And the only response to that seems to be that code enforcement and members of this board are not correct. There's also other factors to go through and ask about this project, unless the applicants have anything else to say on that, that particular issue.
I know, we know.
All right. Or is there other questions? I'm sorry to jump in the driver's seat.
No, no problem.
Chairman.
So what is your actual intent of sales?
Just smoke shop, accessories, just tobacco.
Okay, and your hours of operation?
From 9 to 9.
Seven days a week?
Mm-hmm.
Think it's, I think it's
It's got to be 10 to 10.
Well, you could close by 9, but you can't open till 10 a.m. according to
Okay, no problem.
In the letter that they submitted, it said 10 to 10, which was
Which is fine.
Yeah.
Other members of the board, other questions pertaining to the operation?
Yeah, I, um, no, no, I don't have any questions. I'm good. I mean, I'm listening to everything and it's sort of answered questions that I get, so I'm good.
Nothing. Legal, Sam?
I think I've said enough. Just going over the criteria here to see if there's anything the board didn't touch on. You're not going to be selling cannabis out of the store?
No cannabis.
Okay.
No smoking in the store?
No, there would be no smoking in the store.
Do you have any plans for additional signs, building mounted signs, or anything for the store?
They do. They hired LED, LED signs a while back. They're supposed to make application. I believe from talking to the clients, that people, he said that they really couldn't make that application until the action by this board.
Okay.
So there's a little confusion with that as well. They were hired a while ago, and hopefully, hopefully we'll be able to put a sign out.
Well, the signs are already out. They defy for the permit. We can't issue the permit correctly until the building occupancy has been issued. That's the holdup for
You were aware, though, that they did that?
The signs are up. I already paid their attention.
They, the LED did contact you?
I believe so, yes. But again, we can't issue it until this is all rectified. That's all. This gets rectified today, then we'll go ahead and issue the permit for that.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any plans to add, any kind of drive-through to the business? This is more of a question for code. Have they ever had any issues letting you in for inspections?
No.
Well, that's good. Okay, that's it for me.
Can I just add one thing? They sat in through your meeting. I think they have a good overview now of what they will be expected to do. And I think they understand that if you do grant this authority to them, that they'll respect it. They understand what their ramifications would be if they violated any of the laws, state or village laws, after a special use permit would be issued by the school. So I want to make that clear. Talking to the clients, I think they're sincere now and understand that they really need to be a little bit more proactive with the village. And I'm hoping that they'll, if they are granted this special use permit, that they'll be able to interact with the code enforcement if they have any other questions going through.
Of course.
Can I go back and have a final question?
Member Spencer.
Mr. President.
So you guys were issued a stop work order, and you violated that several occasions. Did that go any farther with the, been kind of formal charge of operating without
No, we didn't put them into court. We just monitored what they did, explained what they needed to do. Took a little bit of doing to get the application right. They submitted what was wrong, back and forth a couple of times, but eventually complied, yes.
Okay. So code enforcement, Don, Kate, anything else?
No, I think we've given you everything we could. They're not in violation of being within 500 feet of any school or daycare, anything like that, or within 200 of a work, workplace of worship, so
Floor plan looks good.
The floor plan looks good.
Your safety plan looks good.
So everything else seems to be in order at this point.
And I saw the email from Dave here. Nothing, right? Dave written. Okay, public concerns and comments?
Kevin Peterson, 54, Babette Drive. Let me see if I understand it correctly. Has the applicant here owned and operated another retail operation at any point in time?
It doesn't appear to be.
No. This is their first time doing it. So I find it, I find it rather disturbing that people that come to do business in the Village of DePue just feel they can lease a piece of property, get the keys, unlock the door, and start selling. That's not proper. Where, where, I mean, do they, did they say they own this building, or are they leasing this building?
Leasing or leasing.
They're leasing. I'm sorry, what was that?
So we, we don't lease, we bought a business from different, somebody else used
Oh, it's the material. We have new owners.
Again, I think, as Member Soha mentioned a little bit ago, we need the business owner to be answering the questions. Thank you.
Okay, so I guess to clarify for you, Kevin Peterson, they purchased an existing business, the name of the business, maybe the products, but they opened up the retail store without filing for the business occupancy and the special use permit. That's where the, that's where they were in violation.
So this is a different name than the one that was on Transit?
It's the same name, but the different owner purchased it.
But you said it's incorporated?
The incorporation of this business in particular, Hot Spot 716, Inc., was March of 2015, or 2025.
2025.
Was the location on Transit Road incorporated?
No, apparently.
What is the business name of that?
I believe it was, they were just using the DVA.
It's on the application that it's up there somewhere.
I handed a lot of documents down to
I don't believe it was incorporated.
Because if it's the same name, you can't incorporate it twice.
Sorry, do you still have the documents I handed you?
But you can turn the DVA in.
We have those
We're going to need those.
If they purchase the DVA, they can then incorporate it.
I think so. I think we got that.
Yes.
These are all the documents that you folks handed me. Some of these are, but the sale agreement, I think you have it, Mr. DeGlossy.
Yes, we have.
Yeah, we've got the sale agreement.
Okay, so sitting back here, listening to the first 10, 15 minutes tonight, I'm hearing police reports and times that code enforcement has been in there when the store apparently is open. I didn't hear that they agreed to say that that was the case. So since March, that store has not been open since you were out there and told them that they needed a certificate of occupancy and a special use permit. So do we get, did we get any kind of a agreement that it wasn't open? Is that what I thought I heard? They steadfastly said it was not open?
They said it was not open.
They did state it was not open.
Okay.
Including today.
Including today, and the chairman was out there? Okay.
Hot Spot Smoke Shop, Inc. was incorporated in July of 2021 as a separate entity from Hot Spot 716, which is the corporation that's before us. Similar names, but different entities.
Yeah. So my concern here is integrity. I would hope that the business owners that operate in the Village of DePue are operating with integrity, and that there's not wasting village resources with code enforcement and police having to go and monitor whether or not they're open and doing what they say they're supposed to be doing. I don't think that owning another, opening up another smoke shop in the Village of DePue means that we have to go beyond that and have resources that we could be doing something else with, namely, police and code enforcement in the village. I guess my thing is integrity of the owner. And in my sitting in the back and listening to this over the last couple of months, I have that questions about that.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
I do, I, I don't have a question, but when we're ready, I do have something I'd like to say.
Go ahead.
And really sort of jumping on what Mr. Peterson said. First and foremost, I know you tried to present this as a lack of understanding and confusion. There was no lack of understanding. There was no confusion. You tried to say they didn't get it until they sat over there in that room, and I don't buy that. When you have the police at your place, and you've been told not to operate, and you continue to do so, and continue to use community resources, there is an integrity issue, 100%. And to say that they didn't understand, or that there was confusion, is deceit, because there was no confusion. They made, it was made abundantly clear, as our enforcement officer has stated here on the record. With them continuing to operate and never saying they did, unfortunately, or fortunately, depending on how you look at it, I'm in the position to believe 100% what our our chairperson has said, that he was there today at one fifteen, the open light was on, the lights were open. Our code enforcement officer says when he went in several times, they were there to clean, there was no cleaning going on, the light was on, the door was open, and the open sign was on, what I see here is continued deceit, never once did they come up here and say, look, we made some mistakes, we're here to straighten this out, it was, no, we weren't open, no, we weren't open, no, we didn't do that, that is an integrity issue, and this community cannot afford, and me as a taxpayer, to have our community resources being used on something like this, this is a simple situation, this is a matter of, you either abide by the rules or you do not, so, without having any proper documentation, they continued to operate and continued to do other than what they were told to do, and then they came in today, and their attorney tried to represent it as confusion and a lack of understanding, and I don't buy that. I've said what I have to say.
What I meant was to understand the application process for the special use permit would be required.
When, when he went in there, it was abundantly clear that they should not be operating, and that they needed to close their doors, and it continued to happen to the point where we needed to get the police involved, with all due respect, that's not what our police are for.
Sir, I'm not arguing that, I meant that they understand the process now to apply, I'm not saying there weren't any transgressions, I'm not challenging what the board has told me may or may not happen, I stated earlier, they understand what the ramifications are, if they're granted the special use permit, that there will not be any slack cut, I understand that, that's the message they got when they heard Mr. Elba counseling you an hour ago.
But the police coming didn't mean anything.
I didn't say that, sir, I didn't say there were any transgressions, I don't have the personal knowledge.
And again, not to interrupt you, that's, you keep bringing up the special use permit, that's one factor, the C of O is another factor.
Occupancy.
So, there's two, two factors here.
And the signs.
Yeah, as of today, you can go ask all the businesses around how long we haven't upgraded in there, and we were not open today, because I operate another store, and I have the key myself.
So you're saying, him saying that the open sign was lit, and the door was open and lights were on, you're saying...
Open sign in the window.
You're saying that he's not telling the truth right now?
But nobody was there.
Okay, that just further bolsters...
Well, let me ask you, did you actually go into the business?
No, I stated that before, I did not enter the business.
You can come, we have cameras in there, you can come check in and see how...
Can I ask you a question? What are the businesses next to you, and are any signs, like, like pointing up to your window that could have been misconstrued?
There's a nail shop, I think, and then on the left side, there was a dollar store.
Yes, the Dollar General.
With no confusion there.
May I ask, what other business do you own that you operate?
I have a different business in Niagara Falls.
And what type of business is it? Another smoke shop, were you required to get a business occupancy and a special use permit there?
Yeah, it was there, it was a new store, so usually, when you're, we're used to when you're buying a store that was already operating, you can still operate until you get the permit, like different villages.
Okay, so I've worked in multiple municipalities, if you purchase a business, let's say, I bought, oh, I don't know, Chevy, I bought Chevrolet out of Michigan, I can't just pick that business up and just drop it in the middle of Dupuy, New York, and start operating and say, hey, we purchased this, there's requirements to, there was, there was no smoke shop in that spot, in that location?
Yes, it was, it was Shaken Days before, and it was operating till the day we bought it.
There was a...
It was Shaken Days.
Yes, yes, I would...
All right.
Yes.
There was a smoke shop at the location we're at right now.
But you didn't buy that?
Yeah, they didn't buy Shaken Days, but, all right, I could see where the confusion would come in there.
We bought that business.
They bought the business and all the assets up.
So you bought Shaken Days and just used the smoke shop name, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, that, I better understand that now, okay.
So there was a pre-existing smoke shop there?
Yeah, so you have to ask, this is what we gave you.
And they, for whatever reason, they never applied, once we passed this law, so I'm just looking at her, so there would be a six-month grandfathering provision for them effective March twenty twenty-three, so technically, Shake and Smoke, or whatever it's called, was out of compliance when they sold you the business. So...
Okay, I'm just saying, I could see where the confusion come in now, I thought they bought a smoke shop and moved everything into that, but there was already a smoke shop there, you purchased their products, and just changed name, okay, that, that makes more sense to me now.
Same thing is going on down the road at Decades, somebody came in, bought all Decades stuff, it's the same problem.
Again, as I already said earlier, there's some confusion, they weren't represented by counsel, they put this agreement together themselves, and again, is that an excuse? He, these guys assume that the last person is doing it the right way, they were there for a number of years. Right, you guys don't know, right, eleven years, so...
Well, we're newer here, we've only been here three, so I...
And the cannabis law was passed in twenty twenty-three, so, that was, it was cannabis and smoke, smoke shops, that was when we added a local law to start regulating and requiring special use permits. So, it's a newer law, they were operating legally, and they had a six-month grandfathering window, and apparently, they didn't get their special use permit.
So I can understand the confusion between buying the store, the new business, just operating because that's what was there existing, I get it, right, but the fact that we're denying the police, right, that we're denying that we were open, right, is there, do you want to say anything on that?
We do apologize for any mistakes we made, and we promise to make it right and do everything by the law.
So with those police reports, you agree with what was stated in those police reports that you were open?
I agree.
Any other questions from the board before we entertain a motion? Okay, at this point, a motion would be in order.
I, Member Matuzek, make a motion to make a recommendation to the village board to deny the special use permit to Hot Spot Seven One Six Incorporated, property located at fifty-one fifty Broadway, Unit Two.
Now second that.
Okay, and a motion by Member Matuzek, seconded by Member Soha, to make a recommendation to the village board to deny the special use permit, remember, members, when you're voting, you're voting yes on the motion or no on the motion? Roll call vote, please.
Member Soha?
Yes.
Member Federowitz?
Yes.
Member Matuzek?
Yes.
Member Spencer?
Yes.
Chairman Matiaski?
Yes, five-four, the motion to deny is carried. That a motion is in order to adjourn the meeting?
So...
Motion by Member Spencer, seconded by Member Federowitz, meeting is adjourned at seven thirty-eight PM, all in favor?
Agreed.
Opposed? Carried, thank you, everyone.